I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please talk about the pleasantries, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Misty, the floor, please.
David Harris. Wes Ryan.
Present.
J.R. Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Gary Pratt.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Present.
Caitlin Turner.
Here.
Thank you.
Remind everyone if they have a conflict to face this time, any items on the agenda tonight, please let the council know when that item is up for a vote. Any motion to approve the agenda with some amendments? Under personnel, item I, need to change the last day to termination. Need a new business, item I. And that will be to, Misty had handed out to your folks a letter from Dorsey regarding to the bond issue that you folks voted on last week, or last council meeting. So it would be an amendment to add the bond council services for Fall River Health Services, hospital revenue bonds, series 2020. And then we'll be deleting the executive session. Garland is not able to be with us tonight. Okay, amended to change personnel, item I, from last day to termination. Adding new business, item I, bond council services, Fall River Health Services, hospital revenue bonds, series 2020. And eliminating the executive council, or executive session.
Make a motion to approve the amended agenda, adding termination to personnel action I. Adding new business, item I. Motion for discussion and motion to approve Fall River Health Services Hospital Revenue Bonds, series 2020. And the elimination of executive session for legal, 1-25-2-3.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The motion to approve the minutes from the September 21 council meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes, September 21 council meeting.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Need a motion to approve the bills in between, please?
Make a motion to approve the bills in between $116,771 in one sitting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Need a motion to approve the current claims, please?
Make a motion to approve current claims for $370,650.17.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims?
I'll make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims of $3,475.22.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to read a proclamation regarding World Habitat Day. I believe Kimberly is here. To speak to the council, is there anything you would like to say?
No, as you'll hear in our proclamation, today is the day we have declared World Habitat Day. Habitat's across the world, our partners of the United Nations, declared that adequate shelter is a thing of human rights. And a huge part of why we came down here today to celebrate World Habitat Day and having this claim is we are actually about to build a home in Hot Springs for a family here. So we will be coming down into this area more and more throughout the next year and a half or so. We will be doing a governor's home. It's for a family that works at the VA and their community and to vote for your community. And we can't wait to be a part of your community the next couple of months. So thank you for having us, Mr. Ray.
Thank you.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Where's the home going to be built?
I know it's called Track D. It's part of, do you know where Neighborhood Works has a bunch of lands as part of that South Dakota housing association?
The old water tower?
Yes.
Water tower? Yeah, the water tower station?
We're going to be over by there.
All right.
We've already purchased the lot. And we've ordered the home since we have not built here in quite some time. We feared we didn't have enough volunteer capacity, so we decided to do the governor's home. But we're hoping as we kind of get that all settled and we start working with Lacy and we have Lacy advocating for us, that maybe we could muster up more enthusiasm perhaps habitat so that we can do a stakeholder.
Well, thank you for bringing one of those homes in our community.
All right, thank you.
All right, proclamation, World Habitat Day. Whereas without adequate housing, it is impossible to carry out social distancing and good hygiene practices. And more than 109,000 individuals lived below the poverty line in South Dakota in 2018. And 1,265 affordable homes are needed in the Hot Springs area. And whereas Black Hills area Habitat for Humanity has served 288 families through affordable housing solutions and will continue to address the lack of decent housing around the world while reducing environmental impact by recycling building materials through Habitat Restores. And whereas secure housing not only facilitates opportunities for health improvement, civic engagement, investment, and wealth accumulation, but also provides a source of dignity and respect and serves as a basis for the pursuit of other rights. Inclusive, affordable, and adequate housing is the key to sustainable transformation of our communities and transformation of our cities and communities. And whereas the United Nations General Assembly has declared the first Monday in October as World Habitat Day, a time to unite in a worldwide effort to promote policies and share adequate shelter for all. By raising awareness and advocating for universal decent housing, we can change the systems that reinforce poverty housing and make affordable homes a reality for all. Now therefore, I, Robert Nelson, Mayor of Hot Springs, do hereby designate October 5, 2020, as World Habitat Day and encourage all Hot Springs citizens to work towards the elimination of inadequate housing. Communications from the public is up next, but right behind it, we have a bid opening at 7:10. If anybody has a joke they'd like to share with us for the next minute? We just need to pass a little bit of time here before we get into the bid opening. That takes a long time while you're watching it. Okay, we have a bid opening for 39 hay bales, average weight of 1,600 pounds at the airport. Misty hadn't made three bids, but we'll go through them one at a time. Cut through the bid. Okay, I have a bid from Bob Anderson. I bid $25 per bale for 39 bales. I have another bid from Kirk Seagrist, bid $1,200 for hay at airport. Ready to do some math for us, Misty?
Yes, I got you.
All right. So we had $25 per bale for 39 bales?
$9.75. Say that again. $9.75.
And the last bid? I will offer $75 a ton for the 39 gross bales at the Hot Springs Airport. Dale Jensen?
So they say average weighs 1,600, but unless we weigh them, we know.
So it's .8 tons. If there's 2,000 in a ton, it's 1,600 pounds. So it's .8. And what was the dollar amount?
I will offer $75 a ton for the 39 grass bales at the Hot Springs.
So it's less than one ton. So it's been?
One, one, one ton.
If 2,000 is a ton.
The bales weigh 1,600 pounds a piece.
Thank you. That'll help me.
1,600 times 39.
31.2, and it was $75 a ton.
Yes.
That is $2,340.
That's what you guys were saying.
Is that bale or is?
Dale.
Oh, it's son, I'm sorry.
I want to go back to the Bob Anderson one. And the exact wording is, I bid $25 bale for 39 bales. So I read to you, I bid $25 per bale for 39 bales. Would you interpret that the same way, J.R.? And if there's any feeling amongst the council, I'd be happy to let you read it, see what your feeling is on that. If you feel it needs to go to airport advisory for their 10 dollars, I take it to mean $25 per bale. Okay.
I would make a motion that we sell it to Dale Jensen.
Are the folks on this side of the table satisfied with $25 per bid? Okay. All right, so we had a bid from Bob Anderson. $25 per bale for the 39 bales. An offer of $75 a ton for the 39 grass bales at the Hot Springs Airport for Dale Jensen. And a bid from Kirk Seagrist for $1,200 for the hay at the airport. Okay, so Craig was beginning. If you're satisfied that you understand the value of the three bids and you're ready to make a motion, would somebody do that, please?
Craig had made a motion. We accept the bid from Dale Jensen. I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The motion is to sell the bales of hay at the airport to Dale Jensen.
Misty, roll the tab. Final dollar.
$2,340.
All right, that takes us just past our public hearing. 17, 15, public hearing on the proposal to issue revenue refunding bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $10 million in loan set amount to Fall River Health Services. South Dakota nonprofit corporation for the purpose of providing funds to refinance certain outstanding indebtedness of Fall River Health Services. The attorney for Dorsey asked us to give him a call when this comes up, so let me get him on the phone for you.
Welcome to Dorsey and Whitney Conference Room. Please enter your designated access code, solve a button on the phone. Thank you. Please stand by. Please take your leave after the town, when that's bound.
Bob Nelson?
He will now be placed into conference.
Bob Nelson.
Join.
David, are you with us? David, are you there? Yes. Again. How about us, can you hear us? Are you still there, David?
Yes, I'm still there, are you there?
Yep, we're here. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Evan, sort of that up here.
Sounds like we got this working now? Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, we're at the public hearing for the bond issue for Fall River Health. You're on speakerphone.
Okay.
We have seven members of the council present, as well as the city finance officer and the city administrator. It's my understanding that someone from Fall River Health is also with us. All right. So the floor is yours.
All right, well, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is April Folds. I think you may have seen my name in some of the materials. My law firm is Dorsey and Whitney. And we've got a matter before you tonight to deal with, actually fairly simple matter, ultimately kind of an interesting methodology for those who aren't familiar with it. But what we're asking the city to do is act as a governmental conduit issuer for revenue bonds for Fall River Health Services. The bond proceeds would ultimately be used simply to refund prior outstanding debt that Fall Rivers had entered into previously with HUD. So ultimately, what we're doing here is just a refinancing to lower interest debt service costs to the hospital, not unlike if you were going to refinance your own home. The reason we're before the city council is because under tax code provisions, what we're doing is issuing these revenue bonds, federally taxing them, and the Internal Revenue Code thus requires us to use a governmental issuer. So for the state of South Dakota, that can be a couple of entities, it can be a city, a county, or it can be a state authority. In this case, we're adding an extra, I'll say, cost savings benefit to the hospital by also asking the city to designate these bonds as bank qualified. That's a different section of the Internal Revenue Code, it's 255b3 of the Internal Revenue Code. In order for an entity to designate bonds bank qualified, they cannot issue or designate more than $10 million in the calendar year as bank qualified. This overall refunding is in excess of $10 million. And so as a result of that, we're asking the city to issue, initially not to exceed $10 million, we're also asking the county to do the same thing. At this point, we will then, in essence, combine the bank qualifications from each entities, and that allows us to refund the full portion of outstanding debt. That's also why we're not using a state authority in this case. State authority would have already issued more than $10 million of tax exempt debt, and that doesn't have the benefit of adding bank qualification. So sometimes we would do these deals through the South Dakota Health and Authority, but again, in this case, since we're adding in the extra benefit of bank qualification, that ability does not avail itself to us for this financing. There are a number of different layers to this. I just talked about the federal component, which requires us to use a city or county as an issuer. Let me also talk about the state law component to this, which is probably most important to the folks on this phone call. That is set forth in chapter 954 and 6B of the South Dakota Code. And most importantly, for purposes for you folks, that code section is very, very clear that these kinds of debt issuances, again, often referred to as conduit debt issuances, are not that of the issuing entity. So 954 is very, very clear. We will state that on the bonds as well. Bondholders are very much aware when they purchase these bonds, that in fact, the city has no authority, no legal authority, to use any city resources whatsoever to repay this debt. The repayment of the debt is solely and only from the net revenues of the hospital. So again, why would we come to the city? Because the tax code requires, again, that we use a governmental issuer. That chapter, chapter nine of the South Dakota Code was then clearly drafted as all states have these similar provisions, to then allow for these types of conduit financings on federal tax exemptions. I'm going to stop there a minute to let folks maybe ask questions, and then I'll try to answer any questions, fill in any details that anybody may like, and we'll then go from there, I'll say so.
Counsel, you have any questions so far?
Just that city is not liable or at risk for any portion of this, correct?
Did you hear?
I think I heard the question, which was, I think that the city is not liable, not the correct, city is not liable. In fact, not only is the city not liable to repay the debt, but all of the expenses and so on are related to the financing are actually paid by the hospital. So are fees, for instance, fees of the council and all this transaction would all be paid from hospital slash bond proceeds when we actually issue the debt? So there will be no out-of-pocket cost to the city? And again, under the chapter, we're using of the code, the city literally could not pay this debt, they would not have any legal authority to pay the debt. So no, it's not, it's not debt of the city.
Any other questions? Okay, they're ready for you to move on?
All right. So a couple other things in front of you, and then you'll be seeing, and let me talk a little bit about procedure. I've provided to you an engagement letter. That one serves the purpose of hiring our firms to serve as bond counsel. Bond counsel is the entity ultimately against the federal tax exempt opinion. It is counted to have bond counsel be hired on behalf of a governmental entity. So that is why it's drafted. So I would actually be serving as counsel to the city with my fiduciary responsibility running to the city. In addition to the tax exempt opinion and closing, I would also be issuing an opinion addressed to the city, again, making it clear that this is not debt of the city and that the city has no liability for repayment of these bonds. Another procedural matter, you also have the ordinance in front of you. So the ordinance has a hearing. By federal law, we have to hold what's called a temporary hearing under tax requirement. That would be proposed to be done at the next meeting of the council, at which you would have the second reading of the ordinance. And you would also have the holding of the hearing, at which point any citizen could speak to or for or against, I guess, the proposal. There aren't folks that speak to these unless they might think that the city is liable, which that's just a discussion, confirmation that the city is not liable at the hearing. The, I think the other items you have in front of you are just that the documents referenced. In the ordinance, it's a loan agreement, a trust adventure, and a purchase agreement. Those are drafted, as to form, we'll be working through those in more detail. They're really just provided to you at this time because they're referenced in the ordinance. The trust adventure serves to, in essence, move the money from the hospital, ultimately from their revenues to pay bondholders. The other thing I would point out is via the trust adventure, no money ever actually touches city accounts. So the city doesn't have to monitor accounts or money coming in, going to bondholders. That's all done by a trustee, and that's the purpose of the trust adventure. So bond proceeds are received, provided directly to the hospital, do not touch any city accounts. Similarly, payments are made from net revenues of the hospital to the trustee that directly are the bondholders. So there's never ongoing administrative money monitoring, wiring of money, or anything of that nature with respect to the city either. I think that covers all the documents you have in front of you. So again, certainly happy to take any questions. There'll be a number of other documents as we move forward, but for purposes of the city, the documents you have in front of you would really be the only documents that you'll see going forward. you'll see going forward.
You were talking about a letter that the city would need to sign to hire you as the counsel for this particular situation. Is that the October 1st, 2020 letter that was sent via email? Is that the one you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. The counsel does have that one in front of him for the review.
Okay.
And along with that, one of the other counsel is asking, you mentioned, you know, hire you. This letter, in fact, that we hire you, but again, any expenses related to the entirety of this, these bonds are reimbursed, paid whatever by the, you had said, Fall River Health Services. So the city, though we may initially expense some money, it will all be reimbursed, so the net cost to the city is zero dollars. Is that correct?
Correct. Correct. I will be ultimately paid from the hospital or bond proceeds. I've also spoken to the folks there, and you should keep track of any administrative costs, you should keep track of the cost to publish the hearing and so on and so forth, and then those expenses will be reimbursed via the bond proceeds. And then, just to make clear, so you're hiring me as bond counsel. I'm not replacing your local counsel. They'll still, I'll still be, you know, talking to them, they'll be seeing documents, asking But you are hiring me to serve as bond counsel, and again, that's largely for the purposes that I'm addressing opinions to the city to make it clear that it's not debt of the city.
Okay, and then the same question for the city attorney. Any costs that he incurs to help manage this are reimbursed?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel?
I have one.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have one question that's, I guess, based on sequence, since we did a first reading on our last council meeting of this ordinance. And tonight, we are having the hearing, and we've got the second reading before us. Is that a problem?
No, no, in fact, I'm sorry, I had a bit of merge. This, you folks are holding the hearing tonight, this is your second reading. I misspoke, I was actually thinking of the county for just a second. They're following on to you folks. Their first meeting is tomorrow, and you guys are helping your second meeting tonight. Sorry, I realized after I said it that I had some merge there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, counsel?
Yeah, yeah, so technically, the city council won't have to take any additional action. You folks will, on the municipal level, action from there will just be administrative for staff and your local city attorney to work through as we finish up documents.
Well, I'm not seeing any other questions from them. Do you have anything else you want to share with us?
I don't think so at this time. I've enjoyed working with staff, like, they've been really, really helpful to work with, appreciate the city considering this matter and having the hospital. And with that, I'll step aside, and you folks take your action, and then we'll keep moving forward to get all the documentation in place.
All right. We still need to see if there's anybody in the public that wants to speak to us, plus would be interested in hearing from Fall River Health Services before we close the hearing. So is there anybody in the public, other than Fall River Health Services, that has any questions regarding this particular issue? All right. Fall River Health Services, what would you like to share with us?
I'm Jesse Nazi, I'm the CFO for Fall River Health Services. I know you're all aware of the new hospital that was put up 10 years ago. What we're doing essentially is just refinancing those bonds. There was initial bonds that we purchased through HUD back then, and they had a lockout period on them for 10 years. So now that we finally got the ability to refinance, we looked at different options, and what was best available for us was to pursue these municipal type of tax exempt bonds, so we wanted to look for partners on that. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you, but the biggest thing is we're just looking to save money so we can continue to expand and do good things for our community.
How long is the term of the issuance?
On these new ones, the callback term on these, I think they're telling me it'll be between seven and a half, 80 years on these. So it'll be another lockout period, but the interest rate is so much better now than it was back when we first went through this, because the first time we went through financing was back in 2008, '09, when we had the issue, the first go around of the economic collapse. So we kind of got locked into some higher rates than we would have liked, but it was what was available at that time, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jesse.
All right. Any other questions? Well, let's close the public hearing at 7:36. And need a motion and discussion to approve the issuing of the revenue bonds for Fall River Health Services.
I make a motion that we issue revenue refund, we approve the issue of revenue refunding bonds in a negative principal amount not to exceed $10 million and loan to set amount to Fall River County Health Services, South Dakota Mount Prophet Corporation, for the purpose of providing funds to refinance certain outstanding indebtedness of Fall River Health Services.
Discussion. Discussion. Wes, I believe you had mentioned aloud when the first reading came up that you were on counsel, or the city had done this before?
Not, well, we were conduit for some other bond type, you allowed them to work.
Okay. Not Fall River Health specifically, but the same kind of thing.
I don't call it the word, we kind of issued with it.
All right. Any other question, counsel? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you for your support.
We're anxious to have the committee get on board with it.
All right. Thanks a lot.
David, are you still with us?
I am. I think I heard most of that, and thank you very much for your consideration, I appreciate it, so, appreciate everything.
Appreciate your help with getting this started on that. Have a good evening.
All right, thanks very much. Have a good rest of your week.
Okay, that takes us to personnel actions. Can I get a motion to approve personnel actions, A through I?
I'll make a motion to approve personnel issues, letters A through I.
Second.
Discussion.
Dear Kyle Hokel, he did decide not to quit, correct?
Right.
That's what he's saying, correct?
Yep.
All right, good for him. Thank you.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Personnel actions, Harper. Committee reports, administrative finance, Caitlin. Oh, we need to box back, I apologize, folks. Skip the communications from the public. Is there anybody that wants to share anything with counsel? All right. Caitlin?
All right. Adam Finance met today at 1 o'clock at City Hall. In old business, we discussed an update of the surplus property from the police department that is progressing along, and hopefully soon we'll see that online. We also just put an update on the pending ordinance revisions, just seeing where everything's at there. In new business, we reviewed the monthly finance officer reports. As you'll see in your packet, we have studies coming up in November. We also discussed a potential commercial tenant at the airport. And then we also discussed and reviewed the Armory RSP, which I believe you go over to Sandwell soon. And then moving forward, our meetings for Adam Finance will be moving back to the first Monday of the month instead of the second. And our next meeting is November 2nd at 1:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Thank you, Caitlin. Airport advisory, Bill?
Airport advisory met Thursday, the 24th, at 8:00 a.m. at the airport. Present were Larry Vetterman, Don Connor, John O'Connell, Ed Jensen, Shane Miller, Petra Wilson. From the city, Ivan Venter, John Gregory, Tracy Bastian, and myself. Ivan updated the committee on hangar activities and associated issues. Construction is progressing on one new hangar, and there've been about nine inquiries regarding single hangar construction, and one person asking about building a 10-unit T-hanger. The new hangar construction guidelines, we discussed those, and they need to be updated to reflect city ordinance and code reference changes. Ivan updated the committee on the T-hanger design project activities with KLJ, and you have a couple items, or I think we've got an item in our new business to vote on tonight regarding that. Ivan has updated the emergency, the notification portion of the emergency response plan, and that was distributed. And Ivan's working on getting three estimates for the JDA proposal. The committee did a post-review of the fly-in. We had 60 aircraft coming in from 18 states. About 60% of those attendees actually stayed in local motels, and improvements for future events were also discussed and identified. We also did a post-review on the balloon festival. This year, we had 16 participants, and next year, it could be as many as 30. Ivan and Petra are also working together with the balloon club to identify a different location on the airport grounds for festival activities. And if it'll work out, the new location will address most of the issues of this highly successful and growing event. The committee reviewed and discussed the contents of the proposed airport event application And we also discussed the need to improve ground transportation capabilities at the airport, and some preliminary actions have been identified. And in post-meeting activities, members of the glider club and the skydiving communities have been contacted, seeking nominations for membership on the airport advisory committee. And airport metrics for September, we had 163 flight operations, and that doesn't count all the multiple operations during the fly-in. We've got 100% hangar utilization, and we sold 3,581 gallons of aviation fuel. Our next, the meeting adjourned at 9:30 a.m., and our next meeting will be Thursday, October 29th, 8:00 a.m. at the airport.
Thank you, Bill. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District, Larry?
The next meeting of the Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District will be November 12, 7:00 p.m. at Mueller Center.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Deborah?
The next meeting is this Wednesday, 5 o'clock in the library. We're going to be discussing ordinances for historic districts, so if anyone's interested in that, please attend.
Thank you, Deborah. Evan's Plunge Advisory Committee, Larry?
Next meeting will be October 8, Thursday, at 12:00 p.m.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Parks, Recreation, Mutification, and Cultural Development, Wes?
Our next meeting is going to be this Wednesday at 3 o'clock at City Hall.
Thank you. Plan and zoning commission, Caitlin?
Our next meeting is the 21st at 7:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Thank you. Public safety, Bill and JR?
Next meeting will be Wednesday, October 21st, 1:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Public works, Craig? That leaves a lot of time for you.
Well, I'm kind of embarrassed, my dog ate most of my board. It's not as hope that I'm on, man. And Bob can verify my dog eats stuff like this. I do not have a report this time, sorry, guys.
All right, well, we'll anxiously await your double report next time.
Okay.
Southern Hills Economic Development. We haven't been having a report because SHEDCO only meets officially every three months. I felt guilty in watching everybody else give reports, and JR didn't have anything to report on. So I talked with John, JR, and Andrea. I think it's important that we hear what SHEDCO is able to share with us. Andrea shared there's times that they just can't tell us as much as we would like to know. But I asked both of them to get together on a regular basis, and it's up to them to decide what that regular basis is, and share with us what they can. So I went ahead and appointed John to the Southern Hills Economic Development. JR, you're?
Well, I'd like to say my dog ate my homework, but I ran out of gas coming there, so I can't use that one. I met with Under Powers, and naturally, what she had informed counsel is they don't meet, but every quarter, they do have meetings via Zoom because of the COVID. And things are very, very, very slow right now. I was almost at a standstill everywhere, again, because of COVID. Share with some of the things they are working on, and maybe this may be repetitive from her last report. She's working with people to try to help them keep open. She's also working with, on a grant for a home remodel of up to $7,500. The applicant must be 62 years of age, must meet 80% of the median income or less, and that's $40,000. And they have six applicants so far. What was explained to me with that is if for a remodel, if an individual had, let's say, a $2,000 remodel they want an assistance with, they could, if approved, could use this grant. That would still leave the remainder $5,500 that's left for others to maybe do a remodel in their home. That's my interpretation of our discussion about it, anyway. But have six applicants so far. She's working with loans and grants program through COVID relief, small business reduction grants, and there's a formula up to $100,000. She's working on a startup grant, but it's going through Congress right now, up to 25% of the startup will be available September 2019 through March 30 of 2020, and must be spent by December 31st. And that's all through approvals of, and so forth, as she has to follow. Dr. Steve Willard from Bell Foch, Dennis Fisher from the superintendent from the school, and Mr. Rurz, along with Andrea, are looking to maybe start staffing a Western Dakota Tech Satellite. Tech Satellite here in Hot Springs. Also possibly build governor houses in West River. So there's a possibility we can get that. I won't go into detail, I have some things I can't discuss yet. John Gregory slated to present to Dakota Resources on the State Highway Program via Zoom. Did you know that? She told me you looked surprised. And a number of people have come into Shedco to get information on or apply on an SBA loan, which is currently at 2.9%. That's a great percentage rate if you know anybody needing information on an SBA loan to stop down beneath those folks at Shedco. And the Processing Plant Committee is still making progress and that's what I have so far.
Thank you, JR. The Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee will meet October 12th, that's next Monday, 5:00 p.m. at City Hall.
It's a holiday.
Okay, so we'll meet Tuesday, October 13th, at City Hall. That's a holiday too? All right, we'll figure out when we're going to meet next, but it should be October 13th. That takes us to ordinances. I need a motion on Ordinance A, Second Reading of Ordinance 1217, please.
Make a motion to approve the Second Reading of Ordinance 1217, revising Title V, Public Works, Chapter 51, Water, 51.07, Disputed Water Bills, B1, Testing Water Meters at the Request of User.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Steve, would you call the roll, please?
Wes Grimes?
Yes.
JR Peddleton?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
Yes.
Caitlin Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ordinance passes. Ordinance Item B, Second Reading of Ordinance 1218, can I get a motion on that one, please?
Make a motion to approve the Second Reading of Ordinance 1218 and Ordinance Providing for the Issuance and Sale of Economic Development Refunding Revenue Bonds to provide funds for the refinancing of an economic development project on behalf of Fall River Health Services, a South Dakota nonprofit corporation.
Discussion? Ms. Steve, would you call the roll, please?
Wes Grimes?
Yes.
JR Peddleton?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
Yes.
Caitlin Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ordinance passes. New Business Item A, can I get a motion for discussion and to approve agreement for professional services for the airport project?
I'll make a motion to approve agreement for professional services for airport project AIP 3-46-0022-013-2020 with K L J Engineering LLC, preliminary and design services for multi-aircraft T-hanger and site creating design and environmental services.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, so this Item A apparently is connected with Item, the next Item B?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess I don't know whether to ask now or after we go on to B here, but it looks to me like this is a grant. Is this a matching grant? Is this a, I read most, but here I see they're not paying for all of it, so I guess I'm wondering who's paying for the rest of this?
For the first item, it is 100%.
It is 100%?
Yes, for the first item. They're paying for all of the design cost for that T-hanger.
Okay. I have a problem out there.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New Business Item B, a possible motion and discussion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the pre-application for federal assistance in fiscal year 2021. Can I get a motion on that, please?
I make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the pre-application for federal assistance in FY 2021 to construct a six-unit T-hanger and associated taxi lane construction.
Second.
Discussion?
So what I was beginning to ask, how much is being paid for all of this?
My understanding of this one, there's, it would be the standard percentage. The hope is, is that along with the approval for 100% for the first, for the design of the project, that there would be 100% financing for the construction of it also. Even if there's not 100% financing for it, is our share 10% or 20%?
Typically, 80% comes from the federal government, 10% comes from the state, so there'd be 10% remaining for the city. This is just meant to be a placeholder for funding and not a commitment by the airport or this council to construct.
It's 10%.
We hope that they continue the 100% that they have this year, so without this application out there, if they do, we don't get it. So our hope is that they continue that and we'll have further discussion before we call.
So my response, Wes, would be is that if you didn't feel that the 10% was something that, you know, you would support if we were approved for the construction of it, you know, you'd need to factor that in. So as Misty said, this is simply our application to be considered for the grant and in no way obligates the city to accept the money if we were awarded the grant.
No, I just like to know percentages. Who estimated the cost?
The K L J, the airport engineers.
So it might be more, it might be less.
Yeah, until you offer bid and award the bid, we don't have a specific dollar amount. Could be more, could be less.
So 81,500 is just a guess?
It's an educated guess.
They, this is their business, so it's better than...
The city's worked with those guys. We've had several, they're educated guesses, and that's my question, percentage. This is the first day with this firm.
But for the first item, 81,000, that's 100%. City's not going to incur any cost on that. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New Business Item C, possible motion discussion to authorize the finance officer to confirm the Evans Plunge Mineral Springs Bond refunding. Can I get a motion on that, please?
I'll make a motion to approve to authorize the finance officer to confirm the Evans Plunge Mineral Spring Bond refunding for $1,360,000 with Bond Council Colliers Securities.
Second.
Discussion?
To do this, we have to make this payment this year, right?
That is what this plan would be, for us to make the December payment.
Do we know where that's coming from, then?
We haven't budgeted.
It was his last year's budget.
Well, I know that, but what Plunge is doing, it's not very good.
We did just review Plunge financials today at Evan Finance and where they're at for revenue matches where they're at for expenses for the year, we already have a subsidy budgeted. We're anticipating that it will fall close to that dollar amount.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New Business Item D, possible motion and discussion to approve and advertise the request for proposals for the development of residential or workforce housing. Can I get a motion on that one, please?
I'd make a motion to approve and advertise the request for proposals for the development of residential or workforce housing on the billable lots and subsequent purchase of those properties located in the Fargo practice addition to Hot Springs, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, and 49, also known as the Armory Property, written proposals accepted until 5:00 p.m. on November 11, 2020.
Second, the motion. Discussion?
John has an addition to the document that is provided or if you want me to go over it, I've written it down too. Our city attorney did review this document, the only recommended change that he made that we'll add to this before publishing is on the minimum requirements, Item 3, fees recommending that we add any costs related, excuse me, related to the transfer of title included but not limited to title insurance deed, transfer fees, and recording fees shall be paid by successful respondent at closing. So what you have in front of you, we would add that before we publish it.
So this is the request for proposal that's been bouncing back and forth and John spent quite a bit of time on putting the language together and addressing the three different groups that are interested in the property. City being the first one, focusing on making as much workforce housing available as possible. John identifies how that would work. The second one is addressing a single-family home. There are some private folks that are interested in putting a home up on the property. And the third group is a recreation group that would like to see the Armory used for expanding recreational opportunities in Hot Springs. And reading through the proposal, John does a good job of identifying what those different groups would need to do responding to this request for a proposal. But it is to begin doing something with the Armory property rather than just having it sit there and that has been going on for quite a while.
Thank you, John.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. New Business Item E, a possible motion discussion to approve a plat of Bishop Tract, Tract A revised. Can I get a motion on that one, please?
Make a motion to approve a plat of Bishop Tract, Tract A revised, Tract B1 revised, Tract B2 revised, and a revised public access and utility easement, all located in Block 19 Stewart's addition to the town, now City of Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New Business Item F, possible motion and discussion to provide city concurrence to Frank Burkholt to have Black Hills Energy remove a wooden light pole and streetlight. Can I get a motion on that one, please?
I'll make a motion to approve that the city, let's see, to concur to Frank Burkholt to have Black Hills Energy remove the wooden light pole and streetlight at his expense at 944 South 6th Street.
Second. Discussion?
Is he going to, what, is there any place else where we can just move that streetlight down?
It's in the middle of the block.
It's not even, it hasn't worked.
Is he going to move it or just take it out?
It's a private hall.
Oh, okay.
And it's, it hasn't worked for nobody knows how long.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New Business Item G, possible motion discussion to approve travel training requests from city administrator John Gregory and fleet mechanic Steve Alexander.
I've got a question.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the travel training request from city administrator John Gregory and fleet mechanic Steve Alexander to attend the South Dakota Surplus Auction in Sturgis, South Dakota on September 18th, 2020.
Second.
Discussion?
Is it October? Yeah, they type travel. He just wants to ring first, I think.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New Business Item H, possible motion discussion to approve travel training requests from police chief Mike Close to attend the Law Enforcement Coordinating Committee.
I'll make a motion to approve travel training request from police chief Mike Close to attend the Law Enforcement Coordinating Committee in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, November 16th through November 19th, 2020.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And New Business Item I, that's the letter that Misty provided to you folks that David talked about hiring Dorsey. And Dorsey, but there was another name to that.
I think it's Dorsey and Whitney LLP.
Dorsey and Whitney LLP to act as our legal counsel for the Bond Council Services, Fall River Health Services Hospital Revenue Bonds Series 2020. Can I get a motion on that?
I'll make a motion for what you just said.
Misty, do you have it?
I got it.
Okay. Is everyone satisfied that they understand the non-verbal verbal motion? Okay. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, Misty, Finance Officer, please.
Mayor? Oh, you all have the memo I provided and the reports, which include the year-to-date profit and loss summary report. I would highlight on there as we discuss Evans Plunge revenue and expenditures, as much as they have felt the COVID closure in their revenue collections, they have equally controlled their expenses and are currently at a loss of $36,221.67. Any other item on that profit-loss summary we've reviewed already, the general fund and the additional sales tax fund and the liberal lodging and dining fund are all in the gain area. Business Improvement District, our big fund, the tourism industry has been hit hard by the COVID pandemic. Their expenses exceed their revenues, but they have adequate cash reserves to cover those expenses. Our Hot Springs capital improvements looks nice and fat with over $2 million in balance. That's the sidewalk money we added to that fund. The water fund is showing a gain. The wastewater fund is showing a loss, but we did over $340,000 in improvements to our wet well this year. Solid waste expenditures exceed revenues related to our brush pile control. Golf course revenues exceed expenditures and we discussed the plunge already. The fund summary report, the second financial report I provide, that shows you the budget to actual for revenues and expenses by fund of the city. I do in my memo just remind council that this report that you review lumps together all of the departments of the general fund and if you were interested in reviewing additional And if you were interested in reviewing additional detail related to the functions in the general fund, that's available at city hall in the blue book. I don't print those out because it's a large number of pages, breaks it down by the object level in each department, but it is available for review to you and also is provided to each department head monthly so that they have the detailed breakdown of their expenditures. And our enterprise funds also receive revenues associated with their funds and cash balance information as well. The third financial report provided to you is the cash balance report broken down by fund again. This is just in our main Wells Fargo checking account. The following investment reports include all the cash assets of the city. And that again is broken down by investment and by type. On the back of that investment report are our list of current certificates of deposit with the city. I have those broke out by fund, by name, and then term, rate, value, maturity, and location. I also include some notes so that you can identify what types of funds may be available, what they're set aside for, and those that are restricted either by codified water debt service reserve requirements. We do have five CDs coming due, three at the end of October, which are all dollars set aside for improvements related to the road reconstruction project. We won't be needing those funds in October. Been working with Tracy and John to identify the correct terms to reissue those, and I will be providing the next council meeting some information regarding the rates that are being offered. I'm not anticipating rates as good as those that we'll be getting rid of, but we'll do the best we can for the city. And then the other two are both restricted. There are Evans Plunge Debt Service Reserve and our Cemetery Perpetual Care Funds. Those mature on the twelfth of November, and I will do the same regarding proposing the right renewal options at the next council meeting. I have certified municipal tax levy to the Fall River County Auditor since we equipped our budget. We requested a levy of around one point two million dollars that goes into our one-on-one general fund. The county remits those collected dollars to us monthly. As we discussed during our budget meetings, we historically collect about ninety-seven to ninety-eight percent of those general property taxes each year. So for our two thousand twenty-one budget, we estimated revenue using that calculation. Although our levied amount increased, the overall bill levy, which is the amount our citizens are taxed per thousand dollars of taxable value, decreased from six point eight nine to six point five one. This is due to an increase in total property values, and I thought it would be helpful to explain that so that you would have it in your pocket if your constituents asked you about the way they're taxed. I did report to you, continued to report the impacts of the pandemic on revenue collection throughout the city. We've taken hits in some areas and we've benefited in others, so that summary is provided to you in my monthly financials. We are continuing to request reimbursements to use up the city's allocated CRF dollars. That's the Corona Relief Fund, Coronavirus Relief Fund dollars that the state has allocated to our city. Our main reimbursements have been for PD wages, Evans Plunge wages paid just during the cleaning closures, which are still at two times per day, cleaning supplies, personal protective equipment, and materials and equipment used to reopen our facilities. We are also allowed to request reimbursement for any EPSL, which is the emergency paid sick leave provided to our employees through the Federal Cares Act. We have not calculated those, but we'll be working on that throughout the next week in requesting reimbursement for those expenses as well. We have until the thirtieth of December to request reimbursements. That means they must be purchased, invoiced, and paid for by that day to be eligible for reimbursements. Any funds remaining after that date will be forfeited back to the state. I talked a little bit about the annual conference from S D M L. Tomorrow starts the virtual business meetings. All of the usual affiliate meetings and policy committee meetings, as well as the risk sharing pool and S D M L annual business meeting will be held virtually. If you're interested in attending any of those, the Zoom meeting details are on the S D M L website under events. Talked a little bit about the second meeting of the conduit issuer for Fall River Health Services and our up to ten million dollar amount. Our Evans Plunge refinance does subtract from that dollar amount, but between the county and the city, we should still be able to provide enough conduit issuing for them to pay off their debt. They are aware of our refunding and have made contact with Tom Grimmon, who is our bond counsel from Collier Security related to the dollar amounts. Been working on the two thousand twenty-one resolutions required at the first meeting in January. This time, that will include our new citywide fee resolution, the state-required salaries and wages resolution for current employees, the seasonal and part-time position wage resolutions, which will reflect the minimum wage increase that the state will put out by October fifteenth for next year, and the resolutions designating our official newspaper and approved banking institutions. I've also begun working on the final appropriation ordinance for two thousand twenty, which will have its first reading at the second meeting in November. Historically, we include the water and sewer charges and subsequent transfer back from those funds with this ordinance, as well as appropriating for any other unbudgeted expenses. And I anticipate allocating for the use of some of the extra expenses we had related to COVID with that appropriation ordinance. And then the final contingency transfer resolution can be passed at the first meeting in December, so we have a little longer on that one. At this time, we have seventeen thousand, eighty dollars remaining in our contingency. Lastly, I just talked a little bit about the huge responsibility as council members that you're tasked with besides reviewing and approving off claims, policies, contracts, agreements, budgets, and a host of other items. You are asked to make very public decisions that sometimes aren't very popular, and it's required of the position you hold. We understand in the finance office and at city hall that you receive demands and requests from groups, and I want to remind council that we are there to help you to get any information regarding city current policies. Because although you can individually consider the merits of each request, complaint, or idea, you do vote together to approve, modify, or reject them. I know council member has individual authority to act on behalf of the city unless the full council votes to approve that authority. Making decisions regarding items you're unfamiliar with or uncertain about is obviously not in the city's best interest. So I want to invite each of you and hopefully help you feel as comfortable as possible when voting on any of the issues that come before you. So please ask, listen, learn, and weigh everything. I'm confident if we approach issues this way, our city will continue to grow and prosper. And I thank each of you for your commitment to your city and your willingness to serve.
I've got a question for you. Go back to that solid waste fund. You said something about they're a little over because of the brush pile. I guess I want to know what that is.
I can pull up the expenses year-to-date and share them with you specifically.
You said something about the brush pile.
Yeah, that's one of the expenses that we had related to this year.
What was the expense this year?
When they chipped it.
We didn't chip it this year. It burned it last year.
Not this year, like that's last year. I'll pull up the expenses in detail for you and provide that, and I'll give you enough data when I'm speaking on what.
There was no expat for the brush pile this year, so I'm confused.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's totes that we purchased, totes for this year and totes for next year. And I'll look at all the expenses in detail and share.
Garbage can basically.
Because I do feel like there were some brush pile expenses this year. Even if that was paying somebody to sit out there while it burned. But I'll look at the detail and I'll share those with you. It's sixteen thousand over the revenue this year.
Anything else? Thank you, Misty. John, city administrator report?
Good evening. I was just remembering, it was a year ago today that I got to see my first snow in South Dakota, right with Misty back in Aberdeen. We've been, we've been busy working on the suspended sidewalk. Preliminary drawings, metals had to go to the DOT September thirtieth, which included our utilities for our water and sewer design of the city project. Tracy put those together and got those submitted on time. F M G works on the state project, but it's still right there in front of city hall. They did roadway curb and gutter design, storm drainage, including building roof drains. And the S, and the South Dakota DOT lighting, which will be on the east side only, they've got a lighting pattern to keep all the lights on one side of the street. I S G on their suspended sidewalk design is working on cost evaluation. We're trying to fine-tune cost and stay in budget and get the maximum bang for our buck. So we're looking at materials, the support columns, decking, supplemental lighting, the micropile foundations. And currently, we're looking at presenting a base bid option with three alternates to increase our value. The James Bridge project still remains on the schedule that they provided, and they believe it can stay that way until it rains. They're putting in deck supports for the beam installations. They began today. It's expected to be a two days' worth of work, so the traffic jams will continue one more day. Phase one of the Fall River Channel restoration is scheduled to begin next week on the thirteenth. There will be some inconvenience along the Freedom Trail near the band shelf, or people have to walk over their constructed rail going in. Our streets maintenance parks and utilities department continues some alley repair work. Rock hammer's currently being repaired. Free dump week finished up last week. Wasn't quite as big as the spring event, but it, it got busy there toward the end. They have, looks like they have secured someone to take care of our scrap metal issue, and we'll be seeing that proposal at our next public works meeting. Our utilities department has responded to two different sewer main complaints and several water leaks. They're also preparing and costing for the next phase of the wastewater treatment plan improvements recommended by D E N R. Our West Oak building, our solicitation statewide for intermunicipal bidders, currently three have come forward with an interest, and they are, will look at it more thoroughly in the next couple of weeks. The DOT has expressed concern about stabilizing the building before the road reconstruction. We'll have a discussion on that Friday with the DOT along with some other toppings. Hope Homes continues their work on Canton Avenue workforce housing. They submitted plans for two more homes to be installed along Twenty-Second Street. These plans were submitted last week. They're anticipating delivery of those homes within the next six weeks. They also have one more house planned on Canton Avenue. They currently have one home for sale now. Been a lot of work went into the Armory Property, R F P, getting it available for proposals. The city will evaluate each proposal to determine which is the best offer with the best interest to the city and our goals. We're looking at workforce housing, single-family residential, and an alternative use, possibly for recreation. R F P identifies the city's expecting a minimum of twenty-five thousand dollars bid for the property. Proposals will be accepted until November eleventh. They'll be reviled November sixteenth and potentially awarded on or before December twenty-first. Lastly, our library continues with reading and activity programs for youth on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. They currently, this month, have break computer skill classes that are being offered on Tuesdays and Wednesdays from ten-thirty to eleven-thirty.
Thank you, John. My report is brief. Couple informational items. The two thousand twenty boys class A golf tournament is currently being held at the Hot Springs Golf Course. The tournament began today and will conclude tomorrow on Tuesday. Please head out to the golf course and support our high school golf team. Weather should be decent tomorrow. Craig, your outfit will work well out there.
I'll head right up.
All right. I want to remind everybody that Captain Wayman's last day with the city is Friday, October ninth, and there will be a retirement party for Captain Wayman at the Mueller Center on Friday at one P M., and everyone is welcome to attend. And listening to John's report, I do want to add a little bit on the I S G sidewalk design. The past three weeks, Craig, John, Tracy, and myself have met with I S G, trying to kind of zero in on what we think the design of the sidewalk needs to be, what it needs to look like. And I'm really excited and encouraged about what I S G is putting together. And we've asked them, you know, as soon as possible to kind of get the final design once we've worked with them, to get some concepts out so that we can share that with the council. But I'm encouraged about where we're heading with that. I think I S G is understanding what our desires are, what we want the bridge to, the suspended sidewalk to look like, and we're getting close. Craig, your thoughts?
Nothing yet. I do have a thought.
Can we say veterans discount?
Yeah, oh, we ask you for that. Give the veterans stuff.
All right. Well, with that, need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a good evening, everyone.